It should sound correct. Yep, okay. So. So over the weekend, I have made some progress on just things. I have. Updated a few things. I've added a few behaviors. I've learned some lessons. Um, I have backlog in progress complete. Hmm, backlog name in progress and my name complete. Why is that invalid? Planning items view. Oh, because we haven't actually modified that yet. Left join task counts by planning item. T C on P I dot I D equals T C dots. Planning item I D. And that not only it's. Batlog. In progress, wait. That should be explicit about those T C, T C. T C. Good morning, online. How you doing? Sorry, that was rather loud. Um. How are you? How was your weekend? Uh, so that now should work. Yep, there we go. Getting zeros, we're getting zeros. Knowles where we don't have requirements, that's fine. Three, one, nice. Fantastic weekend. Yours was good as well. Mine was. Mine was okay. Um. I'll say that in the, I got a lot of stuff done on Liquid Sky. Um, I got a lot of progress made and I'll show that in a second. Um. The, the, the creative juices are flowing a little bit on that respect. Um, little, I, I injured my knee. My knee is not getting better. So I can't do any karate. So that's kind of bringing the, uh, the mental down a little bit. So the, the weekend was an up and down. But overall, a good weekend from like, I got a lot of stuff going on this and, um, yeah. So over the weekend. Uh, moved towards working on tasks. So now a task you can edit the task, you can update the information, but you can also set the status of the task. To backlog in progress and completed. Um, we're going to come back around on this very shortly. Uh, but for the purpose of the stuff we laid out last week, uh, this is what's necessary. So now when you go back to a planning item that has tasks associated with it. You'll see the numbers here, which represents backlog in progress and complete, right? So this is showing the actual status of those items. Um, if there's any tasks that are associated for that. So. It's a. It's doing pretty good. So now what I just did is I modified it so that you can actually show them up here as well. Um, we're getting into that realm of, oh dear, the, the screen's becoming cluttered, but trying to get more information in the screen. Um, and now we have a challenge because, you know, it, V U I. Isn't really representing the way I want it to. Yeah, I got a lot of stuff done, got a lot of ideas and things. So I'm now running, I'm running on a, a, a desired. Like next steps and. Yeah, I only have so many hours in a day, right? Yeah, a lot of stuff done over the weekend. So what I've just done is introduced these counts onto the planning item and these counts onto the requirement. So now there's a view that joins those things in there. Uh, so you can get the count, um, of the current status. We're going to end up with in sprint, uh. As well, like backlog is going to be a backlog count then, um. Pending and then in progress and complete. So we're going to need a fourth stats anyway. But. The goal was, uh, get something in there and we'll refactor later, right? So, yeah, my, uh. So got in a little debate with, uh, Doty yesterday, uh, on Discord. Over the usefulness of this and whether we should show this because obviously if this is the. Uh, tasks of the developers and right, if we're, if we're saying that a story. If, if the planning item adds the tasks, then what if this increases? What if this changes? You don't want to give them some idea that, yeah, everything's done just because the numbers are completed. Well, that's not the point of this. This is just to show what we have currently outstanding and where they, where they sit. Um, so, um, yeah. You need to, we need to give some indicator because the tasks are derived, derived from these. Um, and the idea being that the developers right now have this backlog to pull from. And then what we're going to do today is hopefully get a sprint board showing here and figure out the concept of a sprint. Um, and then drag work from the backlog into a sprint, um. Or assign a, a task to a sprint and then have it, you know, in the swim lanes, so. Cause then this might actually be. Relevant. But we'll see. And I still got to figure out what to do with it. So again, like the, you are the. I'm now at the point where. Do I spend a great deal of time trying to figure out the UI or do I spend the time getting these features in? Cause I've got, I've hit productivity streak. I think the features matter more because my vision. Of how it should be, how it will work can be refined quicker if I don't worry about the way it looks. If I start focusing on, oh, this button needs to be here, this button needs to be there. You're going to have streams from me, but he's just yawning. And, and just be like, I don't care. Um, so I think that's going to be important. Um, also I upgraded to the latest version of Angular and all those things. So that came with some challenges of its own. I had to deal with, and I'm glad I got this fixed off stream because I was worrying it was about to overstretch, but this wouldn't work properly. So the, the dropdowns weren't working. So I had to learn a few new tricks there to get them in place. Which was a challenge. So I was just glad to get that done before the, uh, the stream starts this morning. And I just got that number in just before the beginning of the stream. Uh, so that's the next piece is to get that planning item. Um. The numbers there. So I think at that point that basically becomes. It's going to get very messy up there. Um, span. So we got, so we need to get the planning item to contain. So the planning item here. Now has backlog. Number one defined. Or complete number one defined. Then in the service for the planning items, we don't want it on. We want it on the fetch one. Morning Dota, how you doing? Batlog in progress. Progress. Complete. So I started this morning, I was trying to get a DB scheme to appear that I haven't created yet. Oh, good. So that will pull them fields through. We just need to make sure that that gets into the store properly. So the, with the query, fetch one. Why do I do that? I can do that. That's safer. Blank expressions are not allowed. Oh, yes. So I was messing with the UI wasn't I already? Yeah. Um, so that's item dot. Batlog. Item dot in progress. Item dot. Complete. Hard to see a table that doesn't exist by modifying permissions. Yeah, yeah. Those are, there you go. So now one, three, zero, one, one, two, zero. So one. Three, zero. So we now have counts at the, the planning item level and at the individual task level. So we can see where we are. Um, again, U R U X is going to be getting even more challenging as we start to get more information on the screen. So what I did in the end is I created two views just because then the logic is not copied and pasted everywhere. And now I'm just joining the view, um. On the, on the planning items and requirements. So I have two views pivoted by planning item I D and requirement I D. Um. So, yeah. That works. We'll go with that for now. Again, I think it's going to change. I think there's going to be. Some challenges there. Um, I think trying to be dynamic or clever with it was not going to work right this second. Um, but yeah, we'll see. But keeping them as views means I don't end up copying that logic around everywhere. So that's a good thing. Yeah. This keeps inconsistent for now and I only have to change them in one place. Um, okay, so let's do that. Uh. Planning item. Requirement, get this counts, that's the. The status. Now. Look. In progress and complete. Commit push. So as far as this requirement goes. So we said, okay, as a project manager, I want to see task progress against requirements. So we said, should see overall top of progress on top of planning item. That's that. It's not the best, it's not the best view. I think there's a much nicer UI possible there. I just can't envision that right this second. And I don't want to spend hours going through that. This task has this progress, this requirement has no task, which is ironic because it's the see task progress against requirements. So I didn't actually create a task to do that on the requirement. Um. Um, and then as a developer, I should build a model status of a task. So. To be able to make all this work, we had to be able to introduce task status. Um, so that was adding that over here and. You know, adding these three tasks for that piece. So create the dropdown on the UI, that's completed. Update the endpoint. I don't know why it flickers. I'm, I've got to figure that out. This one flickers, the other one doesn't, and they're using a similar approach. So to create the update endpoint where you can update the, the, the status and then change the. Uh, consume the status. So now if we go back to planning items. We should have, now this is where this gets messy because. Not interested. Did I call it completed and it's complete? Did I move the status to completed? I probably made it completed, didn't I? Uh. Yep. This is why you don't use strings everywhere. So the beauty of that is because of them that way. If we go back to our tasks and go here. Go completed. Completed. Completed, they're just strings right now. So they'll be driven off the. That update in a minute. That's another downside to having the client side code. We're going to have to figure out that update somehow. Uh. Dev task should probably be sorted by dev and then swim lanes. Let's make sure we, uh, both agree on what swim lanes is. Swim lane don't get a type of flow chart that delineates who does what in a process. So we've, okay. So I'm, you're on. Yeah, so the, the pure. Charting definition of swim lane is not what we use for, let's go agile, yeah. Yeah. So. The swim lanes will be to do in progress, complete, right? And we'll drag the, so there'll be a fourth status, right? Cause it will be in to do, it'll move from backlog to in to do, right? So once it's in a sprint. Um, those numbers are going to bug me now because there's a, there's an inherent problem with them that way. Um. Let's go here. Yeah, their marks is complete. Tasks view. Yeah, they've not updated to complete. Does that mean they've got, or does that mean they've got? In progress. Completed. Completed. So those tasks didn't update in the same way that I thought it should do. So let's move them back to, to backlog. Right, um. Uh, dev task would probably be sorted by dev. So. In the swim lanes. The idea would be that the dev tasks are in there as a collection that should be prioritized. Eventually, we're not going to get to that right this second, but they should be prioritized in order of the top one is what should be taken next. Then assigned to developer. Now we've talked about the assignments and I, I think you and I agree in the, in that the. The assignments should be able to be assigned to multiple developers. Right? Um, I think that becomes complete just to make sure. So I think we're going to have to talk about. We're, we're going to see that work for certain. Um. But it's going to be a challenge. Uh, tasks. Okay, that, that's showing as complete. Is it publishing events though? Why is it showing, why is it pushing completed still? Stats, data store. And that's a whole different challenge. Uh, I think each dev will have a maximum five tasks per sprint, a P I every two days will be very ambitious. I mean, that's not, that's not something you have to worry about though. You don't have to worry about imposing that. Um. But from a, from a team visibility standpoint, if you're saying, hey, I want you to pair with this person. Or I want to pair with this person on this task, having both people on that task shows that they're, yeah. Again, it, it all depends on how your team breaks down work, right? It depends on, on what you classify as, um. Why is this not publishing properly? Topics. Tasks. That's definitely that. Why did you publish this in progress? I can see why that is doing that. Because the, it thinks it's in a weird state. Let's do. That shouldn't allow me to update that, right? Well, you know, it will. I can update off a few. Okay, so that should join progress, complete. 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 I don't have any checking on that. Their marks is complete. Oh, because they're not. Actually, no. Um. Topics. So I don't believe they should publish because it thinks they're already complete. Right? So. Yeah. So I think we've got to change these. Cause it thinks there's no changes. This is a side effect of messing around with the data. Okay, so let's save them. Scroll over here, they're all in progress still. Refresh that. That should be in progress and let's move that to complete. Let's validate one before we worry too much about the rest. Okay, so that changed to complete. Did it publish an event? I'm looking at this by the way. Go here to event. I think that updated then. I didn't. Topics. Updated notification outbox. Kafka messaging outbox. Certainly one rows. It didn't publish Kafka message. But it updated the task. No worries, Dota. Task completed. Yeah. Notification outbox, task updated. Kafka messaging. Deep processed. So I have a quirk. We'll go with quirk. So if you go to task, task application, task, update task, go here. Um. Restart that piece, make sure that's still, because the debugger should connect still. Let's change this, this one to complete. Okay, we get there. And let's get to a breakpoint here. So. I dislike that. If you make changes and stuff, things get confused eventually. So you can't always guarantee that everything's just going to work. So let's go back again and test that once more with. Let's make that in progress. Let this restart. So I don't need this to be perfect yet. I can, I can spend some time tightening this up and refining this to move forward and get the, the drag and drop stuff working. That's, that's okay. Um, as I go forward, debugging, eventing, debugging, the disconnect between the things is going to be important. But in general, it is working reliably. Um, normally it's an artifact of data being out of sync that's causing messaging to kind of fail. So there might have been an error caused there. There might have been some publishing problem there. Um. Coffee is horrendous today. Um. Yeah, there's all manner of reasons why it would. It would fail. Okay, so let's go here. This is that's in progress. One of my that's complete. So this should now be complete. We should publish a 70 second message. So. So you didn't do that. They didn't do that. So there's definitely a problem there. So let's go and look at task update task. So if we update the status, we had a task updated event. Get there, but how did that happen? The notification outbox not receive a 74th message. That's the weird thing. So why didn't that domain event trigger? That's happen is the question. So share, no, it's in foundation, share kernel interceptors, domain event publishing. So let's go back here. And we'll change this one to complete. And we get to our published domain events. So we have 10, have 10. We should have entries. Entries. Is one. Now this should go forward and publish an event. It's not, it's. What the heck? So that's the domain outbox, right? So tasks. Find the right database. Yeah, task database. So domain events get published to the, and you can see task updated, it was working up until a few minutes ago. So does the, is the. Oh, hold on. Bit task, it does that. Okay. The task when it's not logging, the notification outboxes and debugging out the, uh. That would have to be something we put telemetry on for. So we can enable it, expose the telemetry for the outside. So. Why wouldn't that happen? Come on, I didn't want to get into this today. So the problem, the problem lies is when we, when we save the task here, that commits to the database and the part of that goes through and good. Um, with the, um. Mediator part be running this process and it should queue the event to the Kafka, to the, to the notification outbox on mediator. And then that should pick it up and say, oh, well, by the way, a task updating notification occurred. And this then publishes to Kafka. And that was working. I haven't changed that component. So why is this now not working? So let's, uh. Uh, let's truncate this table. Let's truncate this one. These are historical as well. Let's go back here. Let's change the state to this to backlog. There's our event. Eventually we should see a Kafka one. There's a Kafka one being published. There's a Kafka event. There we go. So let's go here, move that to backlog. There's a notification, there's a Kafka. I highly doubt I have a 70 message limit in there. Yeah. There you go. So it's now, so the date, it goes in there, gets added and date processes there when it's actually sent to Kafka. This means that if this fails to send to Kafka, it can still send this message later. Um. But those events now will be over here. So if you go to the tasks here in Kafka list. Yeah, 73 events. So we have backlog. Um, backlog. Okay. So now let's just shift them to complete, complete. Like I doubt it's something to do with the word complete. There's our four events. There's our. They almost, they insert almost at the same time. There you go. Now on this side. 75. Batlog. Hold on. How are you publishing backlog still? It's as if it doesn't accept the word complete. But there's no validation there. Oh, hold on. Am I posting? Am I posting what I think I'm posting? Is the next question. Right? Uh, API tasks, port payload complete. Payload complete. Well, we, yeah, we mark the databases complete. And we send, let's see what we send. We send. Aggregate view is not really going to do much for me there, is it? Or what are you doing? Oh, I'm just crashing. So let's have a look at what it's sent to Kafka. Backlog. Why would it be backlog? Oh, hold on. Oh. The only way that would be backlog is if it hadn't committed the change when it hit here. Task updated. Repository. So that if that's true, then a change to this now should trigger something different. So when it gets to this, except this point, the task is now going to be backlog. Oh. Backlog happens to be the default on the thing. So I bet you the, the actual fact is that I'm not loading that properly. So my domain, my configuration for tasks, oh, stars. P dot stars maps to stars. I have. Stats. So that would happen if this was being defaulted. So the way this works, if you haven't seen this before, is so that I can control the events that trigger when we change data or update data on the object. Um, all the fields, even though they're mapped to entity framework, are basically marked as read only. So you can get the value, but you can't change the value. What this does is allows us to say, okay, well, if you need another handler to change the task or change. There's a behavior in the system that updates a field on the task. And we don't want to put it under the generic behavior of update task. We want to say, okay, apply, apply a rule or apply a status of some form. That code has to use the methods available to update it or add a new method. It shouldn't actually just change the fields of a property, uh, change the fields of a class or an entity. Um, so it controls that. But this is if it's loading and defaulting to status. Backlog. So. So we're always pushing backlog. Yes, they're now matters backlog. But it was working. I swear it was working. So what have I changed? I changed complete. That's it. There's no, there's no validation on the server side. Right now it's all strings driven, driving the, the front end, uh, driving everything, the front end. Uh, so we just saw that once it got to here, it pulled out and it was backlog. Entity by identifier spec pulls task of that. I'm gonna be a bobblehead and talk more. Um. I don't know. Why would that fail? The status is. I mean, entity by identifier spec is literally go and get this entity from the repository. The relevant repository, which in this case is a task repository for the identifier. There's nothing more complicated to it than that. What does it load as? Actually, when we update task, what does it load as here? Is the next question. Because is it behave, because that's the same query, right? Uh, what do we do there? So if we go back to here, let's load that because that's going to say backlog and move that to in progress. What does this one load out as? If this comes out as in progress. And then this one. So what do we think it is now? Tasks, we mark that as in progress. It's marked that as backlog again. So we think it's in progress. Now we're not publishing. So now we're stuck in that area of it won't publish anything again. No, that published. How did that? Oh, there you go. It's stuck now. Now this one, backlog. Is that identifier wrong? CBE2F. No. Well, hold on. Uh, CBE2F. We just changed it to backlog. Hold on. It was in progress. We just changed it to backlog. That is correct. That is actually doing exactly what it should do. Because this event now says backlog. That's fine. So from this side, it should say backlog. Now let's change it to complete. So the first load, it should show backlog. Yeah. So this one is backlog. Then we should change it to complete. So the second load should show us complete. So the second load should show us complete. This should be complete backlog. Now this thinks it's complete and the other side thinks it's backlog. That's bold us, thank you very much for the follow. Welcome in. If you have any thoughts, questions, opinions, you're more than welcome to share. If you want to know more about the project I'm working on, you're more than welcome to ask. Any questions are good and on topic. Why is that then getting stuck? So the entire concept is this repository here is being requested. Uh. It's part of a background process, they're not even in the same process. Because this runs out of sync, this, this runs on a background worker. Once the CEO, whilst it's always told me to stay in my swim lane. Morning Mojo, how you doing? This is frustrating. So it makes sense why when I was trying to set it, it was saying, oh, it hasn't changed. He was fired at some point, my next boss let me loose. I think understanding other people's points of view and, and being able to appreciate, you know, other pieces of the, uh, the, the process are definitely necessary. Well, that's just someone who doesn't like being challenged within their own realm, I suppose. Or has had someone complain that you're interfering. I've had that happen before. So what I'm trying to debug right this second is the fact that I have a very strange behavior in the one one query loads the object correctly. And the other query, as if it's not actually loading it. Um. So task select top slide. We have to cut out the notification out box stuff. And the Kafka, these two, these two statements probably just need to go to a different channel. So you can listen to them if you want to, but for the most part, they're just, hey, query, 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 query. That's the update of the messaging, that's to tell you, hey, you've sent. I'm not going to get there, so that. That's, that's essentially it. But status is there. So why does? Why does this query? Get us what we want? This query gets us a default. Right? And that's just notification identifier, which is the query. Right? Okay, so that should publish. That's backlog now, there's our backlog message. There's our backlog message, yep. Okay, so now let's see if we change that to in progress. There's our in progress message, still comes out as backlog. This is that same line. So it, the thing is, it shouldn't, it should, even if it's getting the old copy of the value. It should still get the wrong values. So when I change it to completed and then it says, hey, backlog, because it was backlog. The next time I come through, if I change that to backlog, it should come out as completed, right? If that's what it's doing, if it's using the cached copy of the value. But it's like it's always using the default of the field. So let's put that to the test a little bit more. Right? So that's the default value now of this thing. Now, these have values, that shouldn't actually be ever uh, shown. So if we put a breakpoint here now, does this give us backlog broken? Is the challenge. The problem is, this is one of those scenarios where if it does that, I'm even more stuck, I'm not, I'm not actually better off. So. Okay, here's the drum roll. Backlog. But it wasn't even backlog before. I just, uh, now it is, I suppose. Oh. I hate it when you do that. If you're running everything else, you only get one chance at that. And then you've got these, start everything else again. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. If you start debugging, it gets messy though. Listen, how you doing? Hello. So, so the frustrating thing here is um. What? What? Okay, six gig. And so that's backlog, so what does the values currently say? Backlog. Um. Let's change that to complete. Dammit. They got there already, it did. Backlog. But it thinks it's complete. So where is it pulling backlog from then? Right? So now, if I was to change that again, it thinks it's in backlog. Right? If we change that to in progress, where we said it was complete before. Good day, Mr. Jones. How does that still say backlog? Because even the column doesn't say backlog. It says in progress. So am I pulling the wrong entity? No, I'm not. Start running again. So it's not that. So why am I saying backlog? That's the only place. If we look at the messaging here. In progress. We sent in progress, we updated is in progress, it is in progress. This didn't even read backlog anymore, but it was still pulling the string backlog. So either it's pulling the wrong task. I get stuck on this. Not where I needed to be today. So which task did we just update, actually? We updated. We updated this one, right? So we, we've been upgrading CBE two F all the time. If we look at the messaging, CBE two F is the one we updated. Uh, and we pushed backlog. Let's just validate that behavior once more. Task publisher. Oh, update task portion to grade, that's, that, that's that. So right now we say it's in progress. Like, I'm fully ready for this to be my, my error, that, that's. That's actually not even a question right now, that's a, I'm pretty certain this is my error. I just don't know what my error could be. So in theory, the way this works is the, the, the endpoint receives the update. It updates the database. When that update happens, we loop through the domain events on that entity. And we publish any domain events that are attached to it and then clear its domain events. Those domain events are put into a SQL database, the SQL table themselves of, of, um. Um, for notifications. And then another process runs and loads those notifications up and posts them as integration events to Kafka. So they're not even in the same transaction. Even if. Even if it was caching in some way. I'd still expect it to get. Okay. So right now. This is going to devolve back to backlog in a second. Yeah, there you go. So it's gone back to backlog because that's the, the event it received was backlog. So now if we think the server side says it is in progress. So if we change it to complete at the very worst, because we just restarted the application, it should come out as in progress. So this task here, that's the first load, this is the update, that says it's in progress. And we are telling it, it's going to be complete. Right? We hit F five. We should see a notification out what's event happened there, yeah, there we go. And we should hit the other breakpoint in a second. So now it was in progress, we've marked it as complete. There is nowhere it should be backlog. Right? What does this come out as? Complete. Okay. So now I suppose the test is if we now get this view over here. Once this processes, give this a chance to process. There you go, that's marked as complete now. So now if we change it again, if this is broken, by the way, if this is actually holding on to the last value it had. Yeah, I got some problems there. Um. So now let's move it to in progress, so we don't see backlog, we're not, we're not going near the default value. So everything agrees it's complete, so this should say complete, right? Our status coming in on our command should be in progress. We hit F five. We get our there's our next, next event. We should now hit our next breakpoint in a second, which will be, oh, by the way, I'm going to publish the event. This one, what does this come out as? Damn, it's holding on to it, isn't it? So no matter what happens there, we're getting that. We're getting the last copy of it, it's caching it. Oh, I remember how I dealt with this. This is entity framework. This is an entity framework problem. So in this instance, I don't care about entity frameworks crap. So even though they're running in a background thread and what a background process and whatever, entity framework's still there. Um. It's not updated, it's cache. Even though it should do, maybe I can invalidate that in the, in the domain event, maybe I should invalidate that in some way. But what I can do and what I probably should do is, this is where it doesn't matter that I'm using entity framework. I don't want to attach everything else. So what I did on the planning side of things, and this is again the same problem as I've hit. Uh, what I did on the planning side is I subscribers, plugin item updated. Planning item by identifier, no tracking with details, Nick, right? Planning item by identifier, no tracking with details, right? So I created a spec that says, don't track, don't use any tracking in this instance. Um, and what that does is that just means that it's not going to use anything that entity framework's already got. Because all I want is the raw object. I just care about the data. I don't care about tracking it for changes, which is valid in this instance. So. I created a spec that is this, and it just adds no tracking. So we're, we're just going to do the same right this second. I will see that it will fix. I'm, I'm ninety nine percent certain it will fix it. Specifications. Uh, the thing is you do have to do the includes as well. Specifications, task. By identifier or tracking. No tracking spec. There, there's no associated data with tasks, so I don't believe. Associated projects. Just to continue that pattern, right? Uh, specification of task. I single results specification and task. Task where. Using pass equals task domain dot entities dot pass. Uh, is a constructor period. Identifier. And this is query dot where. Uh, he goes to T dot identifier equals identifier, hey bud. Has, uh, include. He goes to T dot associate projects. Has no tracking. So then what we do here is, in the regular query, you can do, we can do the, the load because that's fine. Uh, because that'll be on the entry of a request. Loki, no, Loki, Loki, what are we doing? What we do, okay. We're coming saying hello. Hello bud. Hello, my friend. Hello. Hello. You say hello to people? You don't say hello? No, no kisses. Hello, my friend. You okay? You okay? You can't come and sit on me. You can't come, no, you can't come and sit on me, bud. I know, I know you want to. But I've got work to do. This code doesn't write itself. Everyone's saying hi Loki. The, the tail is wagging. Loki develops. Uh huh. The tail is wagging fiercely under the table. You okay bud? What's the matter? What do you want? What do you want? Come on, what do you want? If I thought I could sit with you, I would do. But I can't sit and type with you on my lap because you're too big. Um, okay, let's see if I can do this. See, if I was using Vim, I'd be, I'd be messed up all sorts of ways this second. So we need to go to, uh, application publisher, no, uh. Task subscribers, task updated. And this needs to be. What bud? You can't, you can't come up, I know. What do you want to do? This is not very good. This is awkward. Why are you licking the microphone? Don't lick the microphone. That's ASMR people don't need. What's this bud? Look up here, look up here. Let's see. Oi, get off. No, you're not having paper. Come on. He, um, he loves paper. His favorite thing to do is to find paper and run off with it. So if you've got a tissue or something, he'll root in your pocket and run off with it. Right, Motley? Want a biscuit? You want a cookie? You're a big bone. Do you want? No, you're not, no. You lost the tissue. No, you're not having the tissue. Okay, I'm gonna. Um, we need to change that one as well for being thorough. So I'm going to do this. Oh, that doesn't work. Okay, I'm going to build that. Then I am going to go and let them outside and I'm going to be right back. So be right back. Okay, sorry about that. Give the best his voice online. He's a. He's a friendly little guy, that's for certain. Well, not little. Okay, so we should have more, more luck with this now. Uh, apparently JB Maps feature working to three bin scenarios, features and feature areas. Okay. Okay, it's a backlog. So when the features are nearing to improve, so for Netflix, maybe performance features, I think you already have. The scenarios like acceptance testing level detail. I'm like, good afternoon, how's it going? Okay, so let's see if this is starting to work now. Hey, okay. Well, that doesn't mean anything right now, does it? So. That's complete. That's complete. Why are you going wrong now? Oh, because you're hitting breakpoints, that's why. So I guess what I get out of that is if, if, if the feature is fine enough in the future, there's not huge to individually, need to individually track it. Some days I wish I didn't have to pump my own gas. There we go. Okay, so they're now all complete. So let's go and see. They should eventually, so. They should eventually change. Um. It's tenant used to pump, in New Jersey, it's illegal to pump your own gas. So. Here we still have. Okay, so they've not updated yet. Oh, tell me you're not even publishing the messages now. There's them. What a screw up now. Let's validate that that's actually getting us where we need to be. Task updated. I got one completed. One lion is, is helping me out by making sure that shout outs happen, uh, for people who stream that I always forget to shout out. So. Which I very much appreciate. So this won't take immediately, so that's a challenge, but that's. Oh, come on. But hold on, I should have got events there. Being impatient for the wrong reasons. I'm being impatient. Okay, so what do I think these tasks look like on this side? So I think that one looks like backlog. So here I pull that out, it's backlog already. I go in. Hit F five and I shouldn't hit the other breakpoint. Now mark it as in progress. I should hit the other breakpoint. So now it's currently backlog. I'm saying it should be. In progress. I should hit my other breakpoint. Are you throwing an exception somewhere? There you go, I'm throwing an exception. Associated produce is invalid. Okay, so that's why. So. Associated projects is a collection off of task. Which I don't have any configuration for. Associated projects has thrown it key. You know what? For now, we haven't even figured out associated project, so why bother? Yeah, New Jersey is the state. So there's two states. Um, I think Oregon and, I think Oregon and New Jersey, but I think in Oregon it's been relaxed. Uh, but in New Jersey, it is illegal to pump your own gas. So being that I don't have associated projects yet, I don't care. This, because the process, because the event didn't actually fire. So it's queued the notification events, right? It's queued these. It's not queued, it's not, uh, processed then. Yeah, so New Jersey might be the only one left. There are calls for you in New Jersey to get rid of it, but it does create a lot of jobs. Okay, so let's, let's start again. So what do we currently think that is? That we think that's in progress. We're all sorts of out of whack now. I stream when I can. Just need a schedule and a focus. Backlog. Uh-oh, dogs have disappeared. It's the record side. That's from Lane, some would say. Backlog. Is this the kind of breakpoint I'm not seeing? Uh. Update task. No, it's not stuck in a breakpoint I'm not seeing, I'm just. So just from a workflow perspective, by the way, if this was built, if this project was being built. Then individual teams or groups might be working on these individual components and testing them. It's rare that anyone would actually go through and not do sufficient testing on this or the, or it should be rare. I have the problem in that I'm trying to do, I'm trying to do all sorts of different things and. Um, I'm trying to push. The application forward, add visual components, add background components, add more and more and more features. Because that's what's going to really get to the interesting components of, of what I'm trying to do. But it means that I'm. Um. Tripping over myself all the time. Our work system code is easily this big, probably multiple times bigger. I'd imagine so. But I'm already at the point where a one developer jumping between all the moving parts is getting ever more difficult. Because I'm trying to move forward, um, debug. Uh, the application is significant enough. No, he's not going to hit the breakpoint, okay. That went to backlog, that's fine. That went to there. That went to backlog, that's fine. So that one should be in backlog. Can that move to complete? That one's complete. That was, that already thought it was complete from this perspective, so that's fine. Um, let's move that to backlog. That, that flash is driving me nuts, but. Move that to backlog. That's already our backlog. There you go, there's the two backlog, backlog. Okay, so they all think they're on backlog. They all think they're on backlog now. Okay, we're moving, we're moving, we're moving. So we go onto this one. Let's move it to in progress. We think it's in progress there. We have an event there. We have an event there and we've moved it to in progress. We're getting there, we're getting there. So now on this side, very shortly, that's in progress now. Okay, sweet. That's correct. Remove this to in progress. Remove this to in progress. And move this to in progress. Description pending. Rambling Geek has um a lot of different things that he does. Um, so sometimes they work on microcontroller stuff. Sometimes they work on like tinkering websites. Um, but uh. Yeah, he just has to, again, like module, find the right time to stream. And get in there. Okay. They're all in progress. They're all in progress. So we should see, if we go back to planning now, we should see that they all say it's three in the middle. There you go. You get there one day. You keep threatening to. Complete. Complete. But in the case that you do, it is always worth hanging out. So whether you believe that or not. So they all think they're complete now. So we go back here. We go here and we should see zero zero three. There we go. So the lesson there was even though my entity framework components are in theory running in separate tasks. So the the um. The worker process. Or the background service for the uh processing of the Kafka queue. Is set to a long running task, which means that the system is able to say, hey, it's on a completely different thread. Because entity framework is. Um. Managing it all, what it was doing, it was kind of caching what was there. And in the same request, it's deeming that the same request, I assume, it was giving me an old copy of the data. By telling it, oh, by the way, you're going to read it without using the cached version, just use the no tracking version, which means entity framework fires a query off. I got the current status. Which is probably a better pattern to be in now. It's probably useful to understand. Is there a. Correct way, being that I'm using interceptors against entity framework there, is there a correct way of saying, oh, this entity, by the way. Is now uh dirty. You need to pull it if you're asked for it again, right? Um, so you can't all like remove it from the cache of entity framework essentially. There we go. That's that's what I was aiming for. So now we see that there's one in progress, three tasks done. We can do, we can go back over here, go to these tasks. We can say uh introduce status was the one and we can mark that as complete. So now we go back to this. In a second, our planning item should show as. Again, it's going to be, there you go, zero zero four. So. I don't think this is always going to remain as this zero slash zero slash zero. Uh, yeah, this format. So I'm not going to panic about it right this second, but this is an indicator for us to think about. Uh, and I'd be interested to know if you, if you, if you have opinions on how that should lay out, if you have thoughts on. How you would want to see that information. Um, I'm open to ideas there. Okay. So with that done. We have that piece in place, so let's go and. Uh, we do have some inconsistency, by the way. I called it completed here and complete there, so. You have to address that later, but again, the the entire goal of the system not have this hard code in the client, right? Um. Uh, status for task is complete. Not completed. Um, so there's a bit of inconsistency there, so that's going to be something that I'm going to have to. Figure out later. But again, when I'm saying that, I'm not scared of doing that figuring out later. I think that the code. And I'm hoping that every time I do this sort of stuff, it kind of proves the fact that. The code is manageable. The code is in pretty consistent patterns. It's easy to figure out some of these things and debug some of these things. You know, that entity framework lesson is what I've clearly learned before. I just need to get into a pattern of saying, okay, well, when I'm doing the publishing. Those should be no tracking queries. Uh, so the spec should be no tracking. Um. Yeah. Use a no tracking query for task publishing integration to uh then. Uh, to. And push. So we'll get there. We will get there. Um. Okay. So I think that's enough for that for right this second. I don't think there's anything, when I, when I wanted task progress. I think that was it. Let's go and see if we can at least. Get uh started on what the swim lane should be. Again, if you're new to the stream or not, and you have questions, thoughts, opinions on what I'm doing, if you, if you want to get engaged in the conversation about how this is working, you want to understand more. Please ask, like, having conversations about this is necessary. Um, am I solving a problem or am I creating more? Am I, you know, Dota's been good enough to kind of talk through some, some of the process differences. Where I have one view, he has another, and it's helpful for me discovery perspective to understand. Am I actually? Does it fit this need? Does it fit that need? And 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 is it helping? Um, so far I think it's on the right path. But it's not perfect. New pull request. Task status. Create pull request. So we introduce the status field and we introduce these as date time offset. So. Notice the problem with the date times. Um, this was actually the first time that I decided that I would actually pull through. Who updated something? Cause we do know, cause we end, we end up attaching the source user identifier on the actual events. Um, but the last updated, so now when you see a task. Uh, it's not running, so that won't be possible. But when you see a task, you'll see the. Um. Uh, you see the who it was updated by and when, but it also means that I'm not, I'm actually tracking UTC. So all the events that are coming out are UTC dated and do not have uh. Uh. But I know we problems there. Let's go back over here. Nice. Yeah, unfortunately. They also stream at the same, same sort of period I do, so we'll see. Okay, um, yeah, so that's that. So create pull request. Let's get that merged. Um. So this is complaining because I do have the rules in place that it needs approval. Um. But right now. It's me primarily focused on this, so. Yeah, good. Uh. Because other people are in the repository. Yo, I didn't watch for a while. Great. See you didn't stop developing. Hi, Gunner Schools. How's it going? Welcome back. Yeah, didn't stop. There's a lot has gone on. Uh, in in the time. Delete them. So. Uh, development checkout. Development update. I was really, really hoping to get past that point today into the swim lanes. Like it would have been really good. Um. To get in there. Sorry. Oh, bud. Come and lie down. Dog. Foundation development checkout. Uh, development update. So we'll delete those branches, get them cleaned up. Run it and make sure everything's working. Like us. Wait. Okay, let's run this once more. Restart the Angular piece. And then we'll talk about. What the focus is going to be for the next couple of days. Including adding into the stars. But the beauty is adding into the status is not. Because we haven't built a lot of process around it, adding into the status is almost literally. Adding a string there and changing some SQL queries and and some models. Um, it doesn't really have bearing on very much else. At this point. Merge commits. Uh, I guess I get to find out if I just screwed up there. The worst happens is if I had to repeat something and I would imagine this won't build otherwise. Yeah. If you are watching on YouTube, um, don't forget. Um, all the videos are uploaded to, I I stream to YouTube and therefore all the live streams are available. Um, uh, there. So the hundred and fifty three. Episodes of Liquid Sky Development that come before are all there now. Um, also, if you are on YouTube, if you, if you could, drop a like if you're enjoying what you're seeing. Um, I don't like the promotion part of this, but it does mean that more people get to see it and it goes. It does drive more content if people are liking and subscribing to the videos. Um, it matters a lot more to YouTube than it does on Twitch, right? Um. And I appreciate the views. I appreciate people hanging out. Very much so. As always, if you have any questions, thoughts, opinions on what I'm doing, feel free. So. We should still have a working application in a second. So click on here, we have our tasks. Go here to tasks. Yep, everything is still working. That that flicker is driving me crazy. I've got to figure out why this one flickers and the other one doesn't. Uh, they be, they're done in the exact same way and I just don't understand whether there's something I'm doing differently with the stores or the loading of the data. I don't know. So again, if you haven't seen this yet, the task is created as a piece of work for a developer to to focus on. And the requirement that drives this task is here so that you've got it as a reference. This is why you're doing this particular thing. Um, this is a, this isn't copied. This is actually joined, so if you update the requirement, this will change. So what we're going to do now, um, probably not today, but we are going to move towards is we're going to, let's create. So in planning, we have uh. There's a, that we say that's completed. That will disappear from here then. Eventually, there you go. So let's create a new item. And this is introduce um. Allow. Team. Allow developers. Start a sprint. A sprint should. Specify a starting date time. So yeah, let me ask you this. Do you like? A time being specified on the sprint? Cause they always drove me crazy because if we started a sprint at ten AM on a Monday morning, right? Cause of whatever reason. It ends. At ten AM on, you know, two weeks from now. But you might be just doing all the admin work or finishing things up on that Monday. So to me, it should be Monday to Monday. But then the new sprint starts on Tuesday, so. Yeah, I see the, now, now I say it out loud, I'm like, yeah, I kind of realize the time thing. Cam ban boards we'll get into. Whether we need them or. How they could be used, because I think uh things like DevOps, that's, that's a, a challenge. A sprint perspective, because DevOps often doesn't have, DevOps doesn't work necessarily in sprints. Again. They are important if you have teams that can benefit from them. Let's find a starting date and time. And a corresponding and a duration. Um. Sprint is used to track the work that the team will. Work on during. So we're going to put the review date as being this Friday. It's assigned to Jeffrey because that's who's working on it. And we'll go there. We need to build this out so it doesn't have the dependency on being loaded, because it has to go through everything to get back to this. There you go. It's loaded. So now I can click on it. So. This is. Story essentially. I don't know why it does the pop up up there as well. I'm going to figure that out. Maybe it's because I've got the service running and I've got that notification tab for the uh actual notifications. So. Like I said, I'm at the point where with this application, that every single feature could explode into a set of other features. And that's kind of why this planning is useful. We don't have the concept of, well, we have a concept of a team in terms of the application has a team's component at this moment, which has no necessary value. But. What is a team? What is this? Who who creates the sprint board, right? Um, right now I'm playing all the roles. Do I need to have? Like, I don't want to get into role based stuff at this point, because I think, again, authorization is something that I really need to go back over and figure out, but. Who generates a sprint? Who who creates the 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 actual board to be worked off of? Who does that? And, you know? Yeah, we're getting into. A lot of complication now. Who watches the watchman? Yes. Um. So if we just, again, we're, right now, we don't have the. So if we just, again, right now, we don't have the concept of a team, so this board will be, this sprint will be. For what? For whom? Um. Poor guy. Yeah, he's a. The poor guy, fun fact, has the worst luck with chatters I have seen of any streamer. He gets spammed, he gets abuse, he gets all sorts of stuff in there. But he keeps on being positive and he keeps on writing, learning software and he keeps on going and it's really. Really inspiring and he's, uh, he's trying to learn, he's just trying to get better. Build software and try and do it the right way, um. And he keeps, he keeps getting hit by what is the right way and, uh. Chingy go here and there, but recently he's been trying to focus on Blazer, he's been building some stuff there. And it's, uh, he's building a little movie app. Uh, no, it's, it's coming along. He's learned a lot along the way. But he digs very deep into some to- some topics, so, so, great. Mark, how are you doing? How's things? Welcome in. I'm not playing scary games. Um, I don't know how to do shout-outs on YouTube necessarily, but, um. Gran Turismo here is a. Variety streamer at the moment, does some Gran Turismo, they've been doing some Resident Evil Village in VR, uh, some flying in VR. And, uh. Yeah, Resident Evil Village is, uh. Not my sort of game. Um, I am way too jumpy. Good. So, this is what I do, this is what I'm building. Um, so this is software that I've been building for the last year. Um, actually, fun fact, this is actually, the, uh, October celebrates one year of streaming during the Liquid Sky Development. I actually started, uh, the first components of Liquid Sky on stream in, uh. September, but actually started development of. Real Liquid Sky in October last year. So we've been doing this for a year on stream. Um. Yeah, it's been going, going well. So let's, let's just say right now we can create a sprint, we could create all manner of sprints, right? We could create, you know. Five different sprints, but, uh, we should only have one active, so let's do, um, I, uh. Uh, do we call them boards still? Do we refer to them as boards? I think we do. Um. View boards. On. Tasks. Screen, uh, menu option. Should be able, should be visible. On the tasks screen. Offering. Access to boards. Bars, um. A button should appear on the, on the page. With. At sprint. We're gonna get into all those quirky areas of of sprint start automatically, do, do we? Um. Do we start the sprint explicitly and then it carries up the daytime? Do we, can we create overlapping sprints? Um. Create sprint. Dialogue, um, when I click the add. Sprint. Uh, button, I should be presented. The dialogue. Offering the following values. Uh, sprint name. Flash doll. Sally, how you doing? How was your weekend? Um, we have. Um. Also, we have, we have a. Uh, start date. And time. We'll have to figure out that control. Date and time. Just cleaning and working on some side projects. Nice. Nice. Working on side projects, always good. How was mine? Um, good overall, yeah. Um, I got a lot of stuff done on Liquid Sky, um, so I. I've had the opportunity last week to get a bit more done, um. It's been going pretty well. So this weekend was just more tidying up, figuring out some challenges and getting over some, some problems. We now have a lot more, um. Working, which is good, so kind of got the task stuff in, so now I can go and get the tasks. And you can see, you can change the status and and whatnot in there. Which is cool. Allow developers to start sprint. So we're just kind of focusing now on, okay, well, now we need to be able to start the, like, focus the work, so we're gonna start the the sprint board idea. Um, and then we'll get swim lanes in there and and that's the goal. I was hoping to get a little bit further along today because I thought I was almost done with tasks, but then hit some quirky bugs. Uh, and got derailed a little bit there, but that's okay. So what I've got to decide here is. Um, the swim lanes are, if you have a, um. Work to be done. Um. It's probably better to, it's probably better to do. So if you're using Jira. These would be swim lanes essentially, I mean, that's not quite that, but. Um, these are swim lanes essentially, so maybe that's in progress or. Ready, in progress, you know, done, in QA, etc. You could create lots of different swim lanes. It's basically so you know where things lie in terms of, um, yeah. That's quite an interesting and busy board there, yeah. Um. Easy agile story, user story, that looks like Jira. It doesn't look like Jira. Easy agile team rhythm. Yes, I have looked at Utrack, I've used Utrack before. I've used it from a, um. That's interesting, is that suggesting the cards go with the? That's kind of my planning items to task, almost. The discontinuing their space product. Um, the the space was kind of like a Utrack and and GitHub and, uh. All sorts of stuff merged into one documents and everything. And they're moving, they're just pivoting it to be the GitHub, because what they realized is people didn't actually want everything in one place, they were happy to use different tools that were better. For those things independently. Or rather individually. So. Yeah, it's the swim lanes, yeah, yeah. Hey, Radio Patrick, it's going well, how are you? How's things? Okay, so unfortunately, I don't have a day off work today, I do not have. Wish I had a longer weekend. So I must, uh. Start getting ready for work. One of the things I wanted to figure out there was, uh, okay, where does this, like, starting a sprint? That's great, um. But a sprint must have work in it, so how do we assign work to it? Work, it goes boo, yeah, um. Um. And, uh, assign work from backlog, so the. Because of the way that I've developed the task so far, this might get kind of tricky. Uh, it's gonna be something we're gonna have to refine a little bit. Um, I should be able to drag work from the backlog. Into, uh, I should be able to. Assign tasks from the backlog. To a current sprint. We'll not worry about drag and drop by the second, um. When I click on a task. I should see, I should be given. I should see a sprint. Option underneath, uh, above. The stats. What I'm trying to do is describe these because I don't have enough. Not have enough visual talent to build out the UI and mock it up and prepare it and. Yes, I could take that time and develop this, like, if I was developing it as a one hundred percent real product. That would actually have to be the way it should be. But I don't think that would be very engaging for you as a viewer. And I don't think it would be very productive to get the ideas of this application moving forward, I think it would just delay me even further. And be long and and drawn out, so I think it's more practical for me to be like, oh yeah, you should see this. Uh, because again, I'm trying to use the software to build the software now. By using it as a representation. Um, I should go to assign task from the backlog to current sprint, when I click on a task, I should see a sprint option above the status. Uh, dropdown. That offers all currently open sprints. So. If you are working in this software. Um, doing okay, just bashing my head against the wall, trying to figure out why my server's web sockets can make a connection but won't broadcast data. Connectivity, always fun. I'll tell you mate, I haven't got a clue what you're actually doing here, nor do I understand it, your voice is automatically dictated some state. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Napalm, good morning. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish this up, but, uh, unfortunately, it is, uh, nine, nine, ten almost, so, yeah. Uh, so we view the boards on the task screen, we add the sprint dialogue, we assign the work, so if you're a developer and you're going through this process and the PM writes this. Hold on, this says add a sprint, it doesn't say what is an open sprint, right? So do you want us to introduce the concept of open? Or? Um. Or what, what's gonna happen there? Yeah, gotta pay them bills. I I can guarantee Twitch is not paying enough for me to do this full-time. Um. So we've got this, there's this concept snuck in here. And it's just a word, but it actually says something, like, they intend this to be something, so it's worth digging into these requirements and making sure. You are, you you do push back on that, so hold on, open sprints, what is an open sprint? Well, an open sprint is one that we've marked as, you know. You know, available, like, it's not completed, but we don't have the complete concept, you didn't ask for the complete concept in this. So then we just show all sprints right now and then worry about completed later? Yeah, okay, then you need to make sure that we are able to close the sprint later. Right, so, um. As a developer. No, um, closing sprints. As a developer, I should be able to close a sprint. Either because it's completed or because we no longer. Need that sprint. And that should come at the end of next week, right? Assigned to Jeffrey. So we're able to track closing sprints, we've, we've now said, hey, by the way, by the end of next week, we should review, this definitely comes up for review. So what's gonna happen is as, as this review date comes within seven days, this will move into current. In the long term, you shouldn't have past due, right? Past due should be, you, if you've got a past due list that's this big. You've kind of been neglecting your work and that's a planning problem, not a developer problem, right? So that's the point. So your current screen should, your current list is everything you've got to do in the current seven, in the next seven days. So if things need to be reviewed and pushed forward, they can be reviewed and pushed forward, but you can deal with them day by day by day by day. So ultimately, past due is the 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 category you never want to see on your planning board. So assign work from backlog, I should be able to assign, so we don't have the concept of, so right now, we have an open sprint, so offers all. Sprints. So, well, hold on, I want open sprints, yeah, but right now for this requirement, we don't need open, we don't need the concept of open sprints, it confuses things. Right, well, closing sprints will tackle that, right, because this will require. Um. You know, this. Introduces. The concept of open, closed status on a sprint, right? So we've got that to work forward to, so we can add the comment there and and work back. So, yeah, that's the, that's the goal of this. So what we're gonna do tomorrow is we're gonna do the. We're gonna add the screen, so we need to add a task, uh, create a new. Uh, screen option. Screen for boards. Create screen for boards. Add. Menu entry. Um. Introduce button. That's just the one task for that one, right? This one added in the dialogue. Um. When I click add. A sprint. Should be created. So we have this problem of we don't have the ability to validate that piece, but, yeah. So this would be, um. Create dialogue. Dialogue for adding a sprint. Uh, trigger when button clicked. Um, update store. Um, we're gonna have a sprint store. Not the phone service. Then we're going to have. Uh, uh, update service to send new sprint. It's also gonna bring up lots more conversations. Um, so we're gonna get into that tomorrow, so. Does a sprint live in tasks? I think it does, so tasks has sprints, right? Um, so now tasks starts to take on a different meaning as an entire component, so we get to address that. And then assigning the work from the backlog, right now we're just allow the dropdown and do that, so each one of these is gonna yield tasks, right? Um, so our tasks over here, we're gonna have. Um, so our tasks over here, we're gonna have. These tasks start to appear as we task out this, this work, and then we start to actually do it. The goal is, what I'm trying to aim for is eventually get to the point where we can say, okay, well, that's a three, that's, you can start to point them and we can start to go through that process. And really work on this. Again, as a solo dev, it's going to get harder and harder and harder, the bigger this system gets to try and make it work that way, but I'm gonna continue to try and practice it. Um, I do still want to get this into a position where you can log into it, create your own tenant. And test it and tinker with it, and I'm hoping that it's got enough ideas. That you're, you're actually seeing where this is coming together now. I'm always open to thoughts and opinions on it as well, so if you're interested and you want to join the Discord, you're more than welcome to join the Discord, it's linked in both the YouTube and the Discord, and then the Twitch channel. Um. If you have thoughts or opinions on, on what I'm doing here, the specific channels, if you want more. Questions on software development, if you want to talk to other people, um, we have a growing community. It's out there. But, that being said, I cannot be late for work. Um, don't forget, it's Monday, One Lion is starting to stream work stuff, I believe, today. Um, One Lion has a fantastic stream. Um, it's a nice chill place to hang out, there's a bunch of people from this community, oh, well, we're all one community. There's a bunch of people that join this stream, that go in that stream, but there's also a whole bunch of others, uh, and it's a great place to be, um, and highly recommend it. So he will be streaming, he streams in about. Three hours-ish, three and a half, or three and a quarter hours. Trap, thank you very much for coming hanging out, appreciate it. We are going to raid. Who do we want to raid? Need some more dot net developers. Fortunately, Alicia's not. Good work, thank you, thanks, Mark, and I will, I catch you next time. Sir Jones, you are a super troll. He is a super troll. But what would it be without him? Um. Wow, I'm not finding any actual developers. Well, I'm finding developers, just not developer developers. Anybody getting any recommendations? Then, should raid 10? We can raid all the 10, yeah. Been there in a while. Let's see, building right now. Welcome new game developers, you got this, okay. Let's raid all the 10, so, thank you for joining me, thank you for coming hanging out, I appreciate it, I'll be back tomorrow, we'll get on to this, this next phase. Hopefully it's making sense, and, uh, yeah, thank you all, take care, bye.